Let's hear you, hear you, uh, Porter. I want to talk about the bylaw changes today. Supposed to do it thirty days for the election day and election days next, I mean, the budget vote next month. What, what day is it?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, okay. I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, Gil to explain what the bylaw changes are and things like that. Then I'm gonna talk a little bit our effects, just going to that thing.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Hi. I can't help it, I'm not, I'm not, um, going for votes, I just, that's who I am. Today, uh, our topic, our only topic should be the bylaws, the bylaw changes that we're doing. But I have to say one thing before I do the bylaw changes. I was speaking with someone who's been in the community for about twenty-three years this year, uh, on Sunday, and he's very much against the vote, he, he'll vote for the amendments, but he's very much against the budget. And I asked him why, and he said, "Why are we asking for another raise when we got one just a year or two ago?" And his second question was, "What are we doing to show for it?" Now, I can let Larry talk to this, or, or Jerry, but in a nutshell, what we do is, is for the basic budget, is to run Brookridge. Brookridge costs a lot of money to run. We have common areas, that's our reserve budget, that have to be filled out according to state law. And we are not going through all kinds of money. I just want you to understand that. And the main reason is, the raises? Yes.
Mandatory.
Um, the mandatory raises that started October first of this year, that were not in the present budget, and it will be a mandatory, uh, increase next October, the, next October first. This year it has to go up to ten dollars. Next year it goes up to eleven dollars, and every year after that, it's going to go up until it's fifteen dollars. And right now, our first year, we had about twenty-three people, twenty-three people, that were making, uh, the basic eight twenty, eight sixty-five an hour, which was the, the, the state minimum wage. That had to go up to ten dollars. And Larry, if I'm correct, all of those people, plus probably about seven more, that are making in the ten-dollar raise will go up to eleven dollars next year. And how many is that, is that another seven more?
I think it'll be around twenty-seven total.
About twenty-seven total. So you figure that, a weekly, weekly how much that is? We can't afford it, folks, with the money that we have right now. So that's all I'm going to say about that. If anybody has any questions, we have Larry here later. So, I just felt, he just blindsided me when he said that. So today, we're gonna talk about the bylaw changes. Now, there are three bylaw changes that we are requesting this year. Two of the bylaw changes, uh, came about because last year, the nominating committee, which are residents, they are not the board of directors, they are residents that come forward, and they review all of the resumes that come in for the board of directors, and if we have any unit reps, uh, that are running also. What they have to do is they have to check to make sure that all of those people are in good standing with Brookridge. What that means is that they cannot be in arrears of any fines, any liens, nothing. So they have to be, they have to be up to date with their, with all of their assessments. Now, that sounds like an odd thing for people that pay those assessments and their fines all the time, but we have a large portion of people that do not do that. That's why we have a lot of bad debt. Those are the money that we are supposed to use to run Brookridge. And this year, it was about eighty-six thousand dollars when we got the audit. That's another money that we have to pay, that we, that we are out, that we still have to come up with. So, we have to make sure that those people, and the other thing is, no criminal background. Uh, I know the nominating committee only had a very short window at the time to be able to do that. So they have requested more time to be able to get the job done. And these people have been doing the nominating committee, I would say, for about fifteen years. Different ones have come in, but you always have some that see the, that see the problem. So the first one that, uh, we have looked at was, uh, well, actually, it's, actually, it's the, it's the third one. But it is, uh, they want to change the nominating committee to be, to be, to be, uh, appointed to October first, before it was December first. That gave them about eight days, eight business days, to be able to get all those background checks. And we did have problems last year because somebody was, was in arrears. So that is the reason why. It's more housekeeping, so we urge you to... Okay, I'm gonna let...
It's also because they have, they're supposed to be in the news and views in January, and we didn't have time to get them in January. They only ran February and March. They have to have more time, they have to have it there like December sixth to get it in January issue.
Okay. So, that's, that's housekeeping, and we urge people to please vote for that, because it makes it much less difficult for them to do their work. Um, I will tell you that we need, uh, according to our bylaw, Article eighteen for amendments, we need only fifty-one percent, so we just need a majority vote for any of these bylaw changes. The second bylaw change that they had requested was that, uh, that two people in the same household cannot run and be on the board at the same time. And their, their reasoning is, and I think many of us feel the same way, is that each household gets one vote for our elections, when there are possibly twenty-eight, hundred and thirty people that voters that can vote. We're a board of seven. To have two people from the same household can, you know, can cause problems, and I'm sure that you saw some of that this year. So, it's never come up before, even though it's never been actually said in our bylaws. And these bylaws have been in place a lot longer than I've been here, they've been in place for over twenty years. And last year, with the problems that we had, the nominating committee felt impelled to make sure that we clarify that. So, the question is, uh, we would like to amend it as read. It says, "All directors must reside year-round in Brookridge and be a BCPo member." That was, that was the bylaw. The amendment we want to do is that co-owners of a lot or persons residing on, on the same lot may not serve as members of the BCPo Board of Directors at the same time. And that means, okay, if, what I'm going to, I'm gonna say all of them, Gil, and then we're going to come back. I just want to...
I want to clarify, what is, uh, year-round? Does that mean?
Year-round, okay, year-round residents mean, you know, we don't, we don't get paid for this, and they don't expect us here fifty-two weeks out of the year. That's why we have seven people, that's why we have two vice presidents. Uh, so, what it is, is that if you, if your major resident is here, if this is where you get your mail, year-round, this is it. So you want to go on vacation for a month, thank you, Gil, if you want to go on vacation for a month, you know, you're able to do that. But if you are a snowbird and you have two residences, then you are not eligible. Okay, and that's because we work, work is the whole twelve months. It's not just six months in high season, there's a lot of things that have to be done during the whole year. So that is, and that is the, and that is what we're hoping. We're hoping that the majority of people will feel the same way, that one vote for, per household continues, uh, and a simple majority vote, so we urge you to, uh, vote for that. The third, the third, uh, proposal, which is actually number two, has to do with the language of who the president is and what kind of power the president has. I will say it again, in twenty-something years, we've never had an issue with the president being called the CEO, and, but what the CEO can do is make unilateral decisions in which never, never need board approval, or never need to be discussed with the vice president or the treasurer or whatever. The president can make unilateral decisions on his or her own, and that is, we, we've seen, that is way too much power. So what we have to do is, we, we want to take that out of there. Uh, so the way that it had written, it had read was, "The president shall be charged with responsibility acting as the chief executive officer in connection with the affairs of the BCPo." And then it goes on further. What the proposal is, is that the president will be charged with responsibility of all BCPo affairs, president of a homeowners association pursuant to Chapter seven twenty of the Florida statutes and the governing documents of Brookridge. CEO is never in the, you know, was never stated in the statute. So we want to keep it to the statutes, but we want Brookridge to be run fair, and it's not run by one person, it's run by a board who listens to their, to their constituents. As I said, the, all we need is a simple majority vote. None of these votes, none of these amendments will affect the day-to-day operations as far as with the, you know, with the, uh, GM and the bookkeeper and the treasurer and the, and the president, although the president won't, will not have unilateral control anymore over the, over the board. And, just need a simple majority. Questions?
We want to hear, we want to hear them because we have...
I can do that.
No. We still, they, they don't hear what we need.
Hi, everyone, it's, uh, Denny O'Neil, Unit One. Uh, is there a mechanism provided on how you're going to do these changes, especially, uh, the power of the president? Is, is some type of, how you're gonna do it? I guess that's what I want to say.
Yeah, it, when the, when, when these are voted in, when there is a vote on an amendment, whether it's to the bylaws or to the deed restrictions, uh, we have, they have to be recorded, they go back to the attorney, and they are, the attorney records them in the book at the county, they all have to be in the county, uh, so that it is a, it is, you know, it's documented, because these are the, these are the rules that our little town lives by. And, uh, then we will let people know for thirty days, this is the changes that will happen, and then we will initiate them. Uh, I know that there's, that people have asked about an issue of, uh, board members that are presently on the board, and there will be a discussion about that. Uh, what we have done this year, as far as the changing the, the nominating committee to October, we've, we're already instituting that because we want to start that process now, so that, number one, the resumes can be in the news and views. We've had a change in the news and views, so we have to make sure that we get them in there. So the change, and that's partially for the change, and it's mostly for them to be able to do their homework and not have just a, a week to do it, because there's a lot more to be on the nominating committee than people realize. As far as the CEO, uh, what will happen is that we will go over the duties that the CEO would normally have, and those duties would get, come from one person to more than one person. It would probably be the two vice presidents and probably the treasurer, too, because those are the actions that can be affected by the CEO. Does that help? Okay. Oh, I mean, I have, I have a man here.
Uh, Gary Thomas, Unit Six. Is this one vote or three votes? If you vote yes for one, or you vote...
You, but you have to, they're each individual. Uh, I'm sure that most people have seen their, their ballots now. Uh, one is green and one is blue. One is for the, for the budget, and one is for the bylaws. And it's each, you have to vote for each individual. You can vote yes or no for each one. It is not a full yes vote or a full no vote. Oh, wait a minute. For the, for the, for the ballot, for the amendments? Yes, there are three, there are lines for each vote.
On the voting part of it, uh, I've talked to a few...
You need to give your name and your unit number.
Uh, Gil Lighto, Unit Four. Uh, on this voting, uh, I've heard different stories on it, and I wanted to clarify that if a person, uh, votes, uh, say he has three lots in there, does that three votes?
If there are three full lots, yes, he does, because he plays assessment on each lot.
Okay, and that has four different votes, or three different votes, whatever it is?
However many lots a person has, yes, there are, he gets a vote for each full lot.
Okay, thank you.
Just, just to be clear on that about the CEO part. Uh, to give you a prime example is like if, um, CEO to have, um, unanimous power or whatever it could be like, uh, as it stands right now, say, for example, if the, if the board didn't like something, like, say, if I'm wanting to block, um, like, change a parking lot out here would be a good example, make it, make it just a bare minimum handicap spots, I could do it, even though they would disagree with me whatsoever. That is one thing, or, like, I could try to get, like, prime example, last year is when, when they tried to pass the RV compound, and everybody knew it was amenity, that was another thing that he, that was pushed real hard, that was totally against what everybody else would have done. So, that's basically, if I got something like, uh, that's what a CEO does, like, he don't take into consideration what every, everybody else says, and he just does what he wants to. Like, I can say, like, uh, say if there's not, there's Brookridge Entertainment up here, for example, they got six hundred chairs, what, if I want to have a meeting, guess what? He's gonna have to set it up for a meeting, and it's not gonna be a, not gonna be Brookridge Entertainment, even though it's against everything else. That's just a prime example, that's why you need to vote yes for, yes for that one, because it, it takes that, takes that away from, because they can't be like, have, like, their own agenda, so to speak.
Thank you, Jerry. Do we have anything? Okay, I just wanna, I just wanna, um, ask one thing of the audience. And then, be honest, do you have any hesitancy for any of the, um, for any of the amendments? If you have any hesitancy, I'm just curious to see what that hesitancy would be, or if you've heard anybody that's hesitant about, uh, about voting for yes for any of them, because that's the only way that we know how to clarify things, is if we know, you know, people not having an understanding of it.
Okay, the ramifications of the other, the other amendment, two people in the same household, if they can run for the board. Tell you a great example of that right now. If they got, like, two of their friends on there, and they don't, they, like, like, say, the votes are kind of close, you got three people on this side, and you got three people on this side, but you got one, you got two member family households on there, they can vote for something that's totally against what the other three want, just because that one person thinks like that, because when, when you become married, um, you know, the old saying goes, when, well, I say pivot be speaking, no, I'm not supposed to do that, but pivot speaking, when you, it be yoked, you become, two become one. So it's like, they speak as one.
Can we hear, can we hear Jerry? Okay.
We're not going, we're both of us not going to run for the board.
Well, if nobody has any, any other questions, um, we just ask, if you hear anyone thinking that they, that they don't want to vote for this, we'd be interested to know what is the reason, and then we can, we can discuss that and let people, you know, just clarify it. I know it's just a bylaw thing, but, uh, I'd like to just address the vote, uh, the budget vote for a minute. I won't put, I won't put Larry on the spot yet, because he's, he's avoiding my eyes. Uh, but there's, but there are reasons, there's a couple of reasons. First, the one that, that I heard, I was just flabbergasted, and, um, but another reason that people have said is that, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna say it right out, there's so much infighting on the board that they don't want to give us anything. Has anybody heard that? Okay. I need to remind everyone that you're not giving money to the board of directors. Your money is going to Brookridge. Your money is what keeps the clubhouse open. Your money is what keeps our, our common areas clean and... I'm going to, I'm gonna say the pool, too. Well, wait a minute, I, I see pool, but I'm thinking the common areas. The pool, the pool costs a lot of money to keep, keep clean. And people, that is one of the biggest things, even if you don't use the pool, it's still a great amenity for people that may come into this community. And we want this to be a great community to live. If this budget does not pass, Jerry and I have already talked about it, the things that are going to happen, if we stay at forty-five dollars a month, knowing that the auditor has confirmed that we are at least a hundred thousand dollars in the red, we are in big trouble, folks, because a hundred thousand dollars is three dollars. Thirty-three nine, thirty-three four for one dollar. Thirty-three, that's ninety-nine thousand dollars that we are in the hole right now, if we do not pass a budget. We're not spending our money on any frivolities. The money that is spent to enhance your, your community center, for your roads, for the tennis courts, the pool, the upkeep of Brookridge, the roofs, that is what we use the money for. It goes for, that is what we use the money for, for reserves. And even if we had no money in the budget, in the operating budget, we cannot, it is against state law to take money from reserves to put into the, into the budget, into the operating budget. That is against the law. And you can look it up, state statutes of Florida. Please do if you have any, if you have any inkling whatsoever that would, that something is being done. So the things that are being done are, are upkeep, because it is a state law that the board of directors has to make sure the upkeep of Brookridge is done. It's for every HOA. If it gets to the point where we can't afford it, the state will come in. The state will come in. And this is not, I am not, you know, threatening, I'm just stating a fact. So I'm hoping that people will think about that when they, when they go to vote. And here's our leader.
I've got one more, one more thing to say about that. People, if people complaining about three dollars assessments, won't change to code enforcement, unfortunately. They say wasting gas or riding around, things like that. But you gotta remember, the only ones that are really, like you think are really doing that are second shift and third shift. And then you think about, you got a driver on second, driver on third, you got one on the weekend that works first shift, you got second shift and third shift. Well, you take all the hours that they drive, and you take each person, when you multiply that by time, by the money they make per hour, that money is not enough to not raise the assessments, or they, or you, because they still got, there's other things they do besides riding around. There's things like, a great example is like, for example, if you have somebody coming in here that like maybe, uh, that goes to see their parents or whatever, and like, they may be forty years old or thirty years old, and, um, they can't pass a background check. Well, we don't know that, and no citizens gonna be, no neighbors gonna know that, because gotta have somebody to make, check them behind that and make sure they do leave, because you got an incident where a family, their son was a convicted felon, did not pass the background check, and you're, would not have. And he come in here and stayed while his parents were on vacation, like they had left and gone to work for like a month. He was here causing havoc, and if it wasn't for, I don't know about you, but I'm not going to, like, I've heard this citizen thing out here has been floating around. I'm not going to, like, go up to them and say, hey, because I don't know how violent they are, we're gonna go, like, personal, like it, and say you can't be in here, or check behind them, or, or something like that. There's more to this than just, than code enforcement, just riding around checking to make sure the grass is too high, or leaves in the gutter, or anything like that. There's way more to that. But, when you look at the salaries for, for like second shift driver and third shift driver, and you take the weekend, well, it's not, it's not, but, not, it's not even half of what that three dollars would be. So you know that other things are going up, things like this. And I heard, heard it said that, well, you can have a central, somebody do like, uh, like code enforcement. Well, you gotta have, people is gonna put the letters together, just they're gonna have, people is gonna have to go out and check and make sure it's an actual violation. Uh, you're gonna say, well, when it's taken care of, or you're gonna give them any leeway? Or, you know, right now, most, most violations are fourteen days to take care of, so they don't really get to fine anyway, because they take care of it within the fourteen days. Do you really want to go that way? I don't want to spy on my neighbor, or him, him be, him not liking me, trying to get me on every violation possible. He might not like the way I park my car in the driveway, you know? So that's, that's what you gotta think about. At least this time, when, when something goes wrong, or you think somebody's harassing you or something, just, just, just tell us, because I can find out if it's one person in there, we got a problem with the employee, well, we can discuss that with the employee, and we know exactly who's doing that. So if you get a, a citizens force out here thinking about it, we don't know who to go talk to. If somebody's, say, vigilantism or whatever, I can go to, like, code enforcement, I'll, well, I know who's there. And say, what you do to stop doing that if you're doing it? So, uh, this hearing was about the, um, the, uh, part, the change to the bylaws and stuff, and just do what you feel comfortable with. I think, my, me personally, I'd vote for yes for the budget, yes for the, the changes in the bylaws. But, uh, uh, if nobody has, anybody else have any question out there?
I apparently caused a swarm on, on, uh, YouTube when I said, "Is anybody not gonna vote for the budget?" That was called inappropriate, and that's totally illegal. Like I told you, we have, this, this audience that we have today is totally open. I see who's here, and, you know, the reason I did it was, if somebody has questions, we really would like to know, if anybody on YouTube would like them. So, it wasn't, it wasn't to mean anything, and, you know, the audience here, if you're candid, you would see who is here, and, uh, so, I hope that you didn't feel like it was a swarm. And I'm saying, no, no. And I'm saying no, no, they didn't.
Gail Linto, Unit 4. One thing about this budget, I've, I've got a few friends I've talked to. Yeah, I have a few friends that said, I want to vote no. They bought a new tractor and they bought a new tractor and all this stuff. And they don't understand how this budget works. And then we're going to have to do a lot more work if we're going to get this budget through. Because people are really, like you said, we just had a race here about which doesn't matter to me. I'm willing to go along with what's happening because I understand what's going on. But some of these snowbirds, three of them that I know, they voted no right away because, ah, we don't need it. And if we didn't need it, why are we here almost begging for?
Well, I can answer that. When you go out and buy tractors, whether it be the tractor that Billy was buying or the truck or the code enforcement and things like that, that comes out of the reserves, plain and simple. That's like, say for example, you've got a savings account at your own, personal savings account at home. And like, your checking account, you spend your budget, you spend your money. Well, if you, plain and simple, when, say your light bill comes out of your, your checking account. Well, if you spend too much that way, then normally you want to, you know, most people want, well, I got dipping my savings to do that. Well, that's not the case with reserves for us. We can't dip into reserves to put the money in the budget for that standpoint, because eventually what will happen is if you keep saying no to a budget increase and things like that, and you keep pulling money out of, and you start pulling money out of this, which makes it illegal anyway to pull it out of reserves, eventually reserves is going to get depleted. And for example, say, say this roof, something happens to this roof, even though we're getting it fixed. Say it had, something, say it wasn't getting fixed, something happened to it, like it sprung a major leak. Well, if the money's not in reserves, guess what? What you, how you going to pay for it? Simple, you're going to have to pass a special assessment then, because of it being a natural disaster or something like that. You don't want to go that road. That's what reserves are for. They are for to pay for repairs, five years down the road, 10 years down the road, you know, place vehicle if you have to. And people don't realize that the primary thing about that, about that, buying that truck, I've heard that so many times. Sarah takes me to hear it. Mine bought a truck. The reason you bought the truck, or my plan for the truck was, when the guest, when the usage is up on the truck and code enforcement, well, guess where that truck's going to go? It's going to go over into maintenance. Do, do, then you won't have to buy a $40,000 or $50,000 F-150 or whatever for for maintenance, when you got the Toyota, which is, which has got a lifetime warranty on, on its stuff. Instead, you go back and you, you buy something smaller for code enforcement, again, that's cheaper, that's around the $30,000 mark, and you saved the 15 to, I mean, $30,000 to $60,000 that would cost you for a full-size F-150. That, I mean, I don't know where, I don't know why that can't be understood. So what's the question on YouTube?
All right, there's a few things from Jerry Craft. Well, first of all, Brenda, last, last year's budget was a joke, employee raises for, for four more years. And now we're, now we're trying to catch up. She thanked you. Jerry Craft, how did the budget get so far off and how long has this been going on? That's the first question.
Okay, I can't answer that question. How long has it been going on? I will say when it comes to that budget with them, they had, they had limited number of things they could work with, because master of the company would not give them all the information that they needed. If you'll notice that the, well, anybody's got the budget statement, there's a disclaimer in here. It talks about, it talks about that, that they're not, they were only given certain stuff by master of the company to work with. They don't know exactly what year this building was built, or tables or anything like that, as far as the assessment go. And somebody would have had to put that schedule together back whenever it was built, like, you know, 20 years ago or whatever. So I wouldn't guarantee some of these figures myself, because they did the best they can with what they had and what information we could give them. I'm not saying that that they got it. And certain things you got to remember, when it comes to the audit and comes to other things, bad debt. It's, some of that bad debt is because people don't pay their assessment, for one thing. And then you got to do a foreclosure on the house. Well, if, say for example, it can be like so many liens against the house. Well, if the person lives another 30 years, you're not going to collect that money, money for 30 years. Or if they don't sell for 30 years, you're not going to see it till 30 years. So that's just where the bad debt comes in. And I know what where that figure was, $76,000, which is bad debt. I know it's foreclosures and I know it's liens that quite possibly can never be collected or might be 30 years down the road before you see it. It could be any number of things to that. Like I said, you know, I tried to speculate on this, but I'm not, I really can't do it because because of that very reason. Any other question on there?
She makes, Jerry, Jerry makes a comment that people need to be held accountable, especially previous board members. James Bennett totally agrees. I had a question about the budget above. Gail already answered that one. Yes, please put that question to them. She already asked that one. Brenda thanked Gail. It's going to, I wrote back, it's going to be addressed. And Jerry says, I feel past issues with the budget need to be addressed, but if we do not pass it, we could lose much more than that.
Well, I'll speak to the reality of the situation. A lot of things can be looked at, have to be looked at real strongly if it doesn't go past. The reality is of it, I'm not scared of people, but the reality is, is that you may have to do without something. Maybe one day a week or, or something like that is a possibility. Because really and truly, when Gail talked about it a while ago, $3, take it to about somewhere between $90,000 and $100,000 on the budget. Well, that's not easy to come by, so there have, there's going to have to be some changes. Well, what are they already? If anybody else got a question? Got a question back in the back?
Tracy McCumber, Unit 2. I just want to say, this isn't a question, I just have a statement, that I think Brookridge as a community needs to come together. We have great people that work here, that we have great amenities. We have a great community. If we can all pull together and get this budget passed, I'm in agreement. I voted yes because I don't want to lose the life that we have here. And I think the people that work here deserve what we're asking for or what the budget is asking for. It's a community thing, it's not just one person. And I'm just asking everybody to pull together and do the right thing.
Okay, thank you. That was a good response. And so if we don't have anything else, we'll, we'll close this, close this meeting. First of all, I'm going to say that, you know, the administrative staff does a good job down there. Don't, and don't forget that. They do work hard on things. And, you know, there's a lot of things that they do that people don't see, so I'd like to give them some credit there too. And everything, so I thank y'all for coming out today this hearing and what you're seeing now. As I, I still have a town hall meeting tomorrow and I'll go over some more budget with you, things like that. And I'll probably show you, may break it down for you more even, even for that matter. But I'd like to have like code enforcement with me tomorrow here to see if they can say what, what they do besides checking tall grass or checking for, see if there's leaves in the gutter, things like that. I want to tell what goes on in past situations that they've had to deal with. I just want people to know that they do more than just, just watch grass grow and leaf fall. All right, thanks for dying. All right, bye.